The Tuesday, February 10th, 2026 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's typical during this time of the meeting for me to read an open podium invitation to the public, which we just had right before this and had six very effective and powerful speakers. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting. The council meetings typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month. These open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 right here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. So, Mr. Gettrill, we do have a lot. It's pretty exciting going on this evening with proclamations and presentations. So, do you want to say something about the first proclamation?
Certainly, Mayor. I think this would be, I think it's been at least 15 or 16 years that Prop has had an empty bowls event. And I know that the executive director of Prop, I also see, you know, a few people associated with Prop here. And I'm sure that Jennifer and/or Prima is going to come up and talk about the event. And I'm not, we also have a proclamation. So, I'm not sure, Mayor, if you're going to read the proclamation first.
Sure. Is that okay if I read it and then you all come up? And then, I don't know if we want to picture with it here or something? Is that good? Yeah. And then I'll also, on the day of the empty bowls, I usually go around noon and around before dinner and present the proclamation again. So, you have to hold on to this so you don't lose it. I guess we could make another copy. Proclamation, City of Eden Prairie Empty Bowls Day. Whereas, Prop has provided food, support, and compassion to the residents of Eden Prairie and Chenhezen for 55 years. That's really amazing. And whereas, Prop served 2,416 households totaling 8,178 individuals last year. Just a moment. For those that might be listening that just aren't sure what Prop is, it stands for People Reaching Out to People, but it's our food shop, but they also have rental assistance and financial assistance. And so, it's just an amazing organization here in town. I'll keep going with whereas statements. Whereas, Prop is considered an essential, did I read that? No. Organization by the city of Eden Prairie, local residents, the school district, the faith community, civic organizations, and businesses alike. And whereas, the annual empty bowls event has served as a cherished community get-together to raise funds for Prop since 2010. And whereas, the 2026 empty bowls event will support Prop's mission to provide service to our neighbors in need. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Eden Prairie, Minnesota does hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 17th, next week, 2026, as Empty Bowls Day in the city of Eden Prairie and urges all citizens to support Prop. Ronald Case, Mayor, on behalf of council members Kathy Nelson, Mark Freiber, Peachina Ryan, and Lisa Toomey. And I just want to say, it's a great excuse to get out and have a really good lunch and phenomenal soup that gets donated by restaurants and grocery stores that have their delis from across the city. Really, really good stuff. So, come out for that and there's entertainment. Am I stealing your show? I'll come down and you both come up and if you want us, you come up to Prima and then I'll come down.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Case and council members. What an honor. This is becoming such a wonderful tradition to have this proclamation. And the tradition of empty bowls, of course, is 16 years this year and Prop is 55 years old, part of the community. So, it is a fundraiser, but it is more than that. It is a community gathering and a reminder that there are people with empty bowls in our community, which many people find hard to believe in Eden Prairie, but there are many people of need. And we are seeing an increased need right now and the community has been pouring their hearts and their food and financial support into our programs to make sure that we're taking care of all of our neighbors. So, we are so very grateful.
And there's 10,000 pounds. I just actually walked by downstairs this evening. Downstairs yet to be delivered. Is that accurate that we've gathered on behalf of a partnership?
Yes. You have been sponsoring a food drive and helping us and the Prop Shop and senior community services. We are anxiously awaiting the delivery of all that food tomorrow. We have
Tomorrow morning.
We have a crew lined up to bring it in and weigh it and start the unpacking process. So, yes, thank you.
And I understand Prima had a five-minute speech, so keep it down to five.
Yes.
Do you want to?
I'm okay right now.
You sure?
Yeah.
Get some pictures out.
Are you going to have the silent auction?
I will talk about that. Yes, we'll have an amazing silent auction. We have gathered an incredible amount of donations for this year. I was just chatting with the volunteer who's running that and she's really thrilled. We'll be previewing it tomorrow and it goes live on Wednesday. My top two pick items right now are a weekend in Duluth with some tickets to different activities there and a new mom bag to go to the hospital. So, some really fun things that you can see. No, no, no.
I said they're your two.
No, I think they're cute. I think they're really cute items. So, yes, so those are some of the highlights. And then, of course, gift cards to different restaurants in town supporting local business as well.
Nice. Let's turn around and get a picture and you get on either side of the room or wherever you want to get. That's perfect.
Okay.
Stay up there. Yes, you're up next. You're still up. So, Mayor, yeah, if I can, I'll start the next item if that's okay. Yes. So, stay up there because Prop is part of the next item. The Eden Prairie Liquor Dollar Drive for Prop is the next item. So, this hasn't been happening since 2010, but it's been happening for a while. Eden Prairie Liquor has held the Dollar Drive and we have our liquor operations manager and one of our store managers, Jaime Urbina, and our store manager, Tony Angeles, has, believe it or not, we still have paper checks. City uses paper checks still. We have a paper check. And I believe Jaime, you're going to talk about the Dollar Drive and we have a presentation.
Yep. So, the liquor stores partnered with Prop in November to do a Dollar, to host a Dollar Drive and a Happy Hour for Hunger event. We asked customers during that timeframe to make monetary donations and we were able to collect a total of $10,390.03 and that'll be presented to Prop today.
I don't, I thought they didn't use pennies anymore.
They'll round it up to five cents.
Okay.
Do we want to get a picture?
Oh, yeah. So, if we can get a picture.
Can he see it?
Yeah. Show the
Hey.
All right. Do you want to introduce us as Black History Month Words and Action Award winners or do we bring up the HRDC? How do we do this?
All of those things, Mayor.
Okay, all those things.
Yes, Black History Month Words and Action Awards. As you know in our workshop, we had our Human Rights and Diversity Commission provide their annual update to the council and one of the major projects that they work on is Words and Action. We happen to have that tonight as well. We have a lot of people here tonight related to that. It's very exciting. And so, we have our chair, I believe, Greg Leeper, to kick off the festivities. We have many of our commissioners here. We have student commissioners here, something that we're very excited about.
And we'll get every, it'd be great to have all the commissioners up too at the end with the pictures.
We'll have a picture at the end, yeah.
With all the commissioners, so.
All the award winners. Yep, absolutely, absolutely. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Leeper and I am the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Chair. The Black History Month Words and Action Contest is hosted by the city of Eden Prairie and the Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission. And it's an opportunity for us to recognize the legacy of Black American civil rights area leaders and highlight some of the very best young people in our community. And this year, Eden Prairie youth were asked to select a quote from a Black American civil rights area leader and use art or writing to express their thoughts on the chosen quote as well as ways that they can carry forward the spirit of that quote in our community. We received 19 submissions and evaluated them for quality and relevance to the theme. And the commission ultimately selected four winners and four additional honorable mentions. The four winners and their guests are join, have joined us tonight to share their pieces with the council. And in addition to the recognition here tonight, we'll be highlighting the winners and those who received honorable mentions on the city's website and social media. So, on behalf of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, I'd like to thank city council members for taking the time to recognize the winners, the Community Foundation for providing cash prizes to the winners, and the HRDC commission members for taking time to score the entries, city staff for their work in coordinating and promoting the contest, Eden Prairie school staff for helping share the contest with the community and all the youth who participated in the contest. So, we have four winners that we'd like to highlight. We'll bring them up. We'll have a student commissioner following me to share our second and third and fourth winners. But our first winner this year for the Words and Action Contest is Anya Meta. She's a ninth grader from Eden Prairie High School and I'd like to invite Anya to the podium at this time to share her art. Anya?
Hi, I'm Anya and I hope you all are having a great week so far. My contest submission was a video and it was inspired by a quote, "Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble," by John Lewis. I chose this quote because it shows how real change happens when people speak up against injustice, even when it's uncomfortable. My video focuses on who John Lewis is, his role in the civil rights movement, and how his message of good trouble still matters today. And it also reflects how his words inspire me to stand up for interracial injustice in my own community. Thank you to everyone who is here today and I hope this inspires you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya.
"Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble." John Lewis. Born in 1940 to 2020, John Lewis was a Black American civil rights leader who dedicated his life to fighting for equality, justice, and human rights. He was one of the most influential figures of the civil rights movement and later served as a U.S. Congressman. What made John Lewis stand out was his courage to speak up, even when doing so put his life in danger. John Lewis grew up in the segregated South where racism and inequality were a normal part of everyday life. As a child, he saw how Black Americans were denied basic rights and treated unfairly simply because of their race. These experiences shaped who he became. As a young man, he joined the civil rights movement and committed himself to a nonviolent protest. He worked closely with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and other leaders to organize sit-ins, marches, and demonstrations. During the Selma to Montgomery March, John Lewis was brutally attacked for peacefully protesting for voting rights. Even after being arrested and injured, he never gave up his belief that change could happen through courage and nonviolence. The quote, "Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble," means a lot to me because John Lewis isn't encouraging people to break rules or cause chaos for attention. He's saying that when laws or situations are unfair, staying silent allows injustice to continue. Good trouble means speaking up for what's right, even when it's uncomfortable or scary. It means choosing courage over comfort. This quote has changed the way I see my own responsibility in the world. It reminds me that I don't have to be famous or powerful to make a difference. Small actions like standing up for someone being treated unfairly, calling out discrimination, or using my voice respectfully can still create an impact. It's made me realize that silence can be just as harmful as doing nothing at all. John Lewis's words have had a lasting impact on the world. His message has inspired generations of activists to protest peacefully, fight for voting rights, and demand equality. Because people were willing to make good trouble, laws were changed and awareness was raised and the progress was made towards justice. His legacy shows that real change happens when people are brave enough to challenge unfair systems. We can carry John Lewis's legacy forward in our own community by standing up for fairness and inclusion. This can look like speaking against discrimination at schools, supporting classmates who feel unheard, educating ourselves about social issues, and encouraging respectful conversations. Even simple acts of kindness and advocacy helps create a community where everyone feels valued. In the end, John Lewis's quote reminds us that progress is never easy, but it is always worth it. Making good trouble means caring enough to act even when it feels uncomfortable. By choosing courage, we can honor John Lewis's legacy and help build a more equal future for everyone.
Anya, just a second. Anya, that was really, really good and the quote was fantastic. So, nice job.
Yeah, I had to look it up. John Lewis passed away now six years ago, 2020. Thank you for helping keep his memory alive and his legacy here in the community. Anya, thank you so much. I actually have a presentation for you. Your certificate of achievement presented to Anya Meta, winner, 2026 Words and Action Contest. Can we show appreciation once again for Anya's work?
Hi, my name is Asa Shannon and my quote is by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and, um, I'll just say it now. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And I made a video to represent my quote and I, and in the video, I say what it means to me, where I'm from for some reason, and who it's by and the quote. Hope you like it. Some of you judges might have gone there, might know me because it's official, because this is it, 102nd year alive. And my quote is by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. What it means to me is if there's only hate in the world, the only thing, only bad stuff will happen. But if there is love and light coming in against the darkness and hate, things won't be so dark in the end, which is why I drew this picture to represent, also for the competition. What life shouldn't have been like back when MLK Jr. was around. And so, this is what I drew. Fire. Nothing but that for right now because fire can't put out fire. It just makes it worse. And fighting. But there's a good side to it, what life should have been like back when MLK Jr. was So, if there's love in the world, it can get rid of the fire, get rid of the fire, get rid of the hate. It's basically that simple. So, don't be a hater.
Another really good quote.
Thank you so much, Asa. I love that so much and I will have a certificate right here for you. Mayor Case and council members, my name is Iqra Ibrahim and I'm a student in, on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. I'd like to introduce Itisha Burmagunta, a sixth grader in the Eagle Ridge Academy from What do you like to come up? Itisha?
Pull that mic down if you want.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to share my artwork with everyone. I am Itisha and I am 11 years old. I enjoy reading, playing viola, and playing soccer. I hope to be an author and write books someday. For my art piece, I chose a quote, "Freedom by definition is people realizing that they are their own leaders," by Diane Nash. When I read this quote, it stood out to me because it talks about helping people realize their potential and giving them the confidence to be leaders. My artwork depicts that when people feel good about themselves and others, they feel stronger and can be better leaders for themselves and others. That gives them the freedom to be themselves and to choose to be kind, the freedom to be the best version of themselves, no matter how different they might be from others in their thoughts, their clothes, their looks, their language, or other things. When people reflect on their actions and words, they can be better human beings and lift others around them, irrespective of the differences. This year, a student at my school was making hurtful comments to me. I would feel mad and think how unfair it was. I kept wondering why she was picking on me. Later, I found out she had been bullied and made fun of for her accent. She was probably just continuing the chain and turning her hurt into mean comments towards others. When I spoke with my principal about the mean comments, she reminded me that those words don't define who I am. She reminded me that only I can decide what kind of person I want to be. Her words gave me the confidence and self-belief to make the right choices and to remind myself that there are so many positive ways I could describe myself instead of focusing on the negative words said to me. That feeling of recognizing my qualities and believing in myself was very empowering. If everyone felt that way about themselves, the world would be a happier, kinder place to live in. If people felt good about themselves, they might be less likely to spread the negative words and hurt. People can be different and not just the way they look, but in the qualities they have. If more people realized that, they would be able to notice others for their different positive qualities rather than focus on the negative differences. This made me think of having a place at school that would help you think of the wonderful things you are and could be. Our school has a sensory path that kids use when they are feeling frustrated or upset. That made me come up with the idea of a kindness path. When people walk on this path, they would see, they would see other people's accomplishments and how there isn't one perfect way to be good at something. Everyone can be good in their own way and feel confident about their uniqueness. The path would give people a chance to feel inspired by others who may or may not look like them. This would remind them that people can do great things, no matter what they look like or sound like. The path would conclude with people seeing the best version in the, the best version of themselves in the mirror. The mirror would show them what they are capable of and how much their words and actions matter. The mirror would remind people that they can be a leader and make sure to spread kindness. Reflecting on the positive qualities of role models will help them reflect on their own positive qualities when they reach the mirror. It will remind them that there's good in everyone and we should try to focus on the good. In her poem, "The Hill We Climb," Amanda Gorman said, "There is always light if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it." I truly believe if all of us would see the good within ourselves and others, we could build a happier, safer, kinder community. Walking on the kindness path will make sure we never lose sight of what is important, of what is important within and around us. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, Itisha. Here is your certificate.
All right.
Mayor, Case, council members, my name is Angela Luarayemi. I'm a student on the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. I would like to introduce Ryan Autowill, an 11th grader from Eden Prairie High School.
Today I'm going to be, today I'm going to be sharing a quote from John Lewis about voting rights within the U.S. and how it's still relative to today. "My dear friends, your vote is precious, almost sacred. It is the most powerful nonviolent tool we have to create a more perfect union." John Lewis said this at the Democratic National Convention on September 6, 2012. The preceding quote from John Lewis not only has modern-day significance, but also highlights its cultural similarities between both the past and the present. Voting is the most nonviolent tool that everyone has access to. It brings together society in ways that have power. Numbers are what hold power. Voting is a fundamental right for every citizen and it is what makes America the land of the free. Voting knows no race, religion, or background, and every vote carries the same weight, reminding us that democracy belongs to everyone, no matter what. Voting unites society across differences and enables change through collective action. Throughout history, individuals have faced adversity and have fought against unfair literacy tests to gain the right to vote. Through participation in election, our country receives a more accurate reflection of the public opinion and what the, and what, and what the public believes is the best candidate for our country's representation. John Lewis aimed at combating partisan gerrymandering and protecting minority voting rights across America. We could protect our community's fair voting by advocating for leaders in power who will work to counter biased redistricting. We should continue to advocate for fair, unrestricted voting. Encouraging members of our community to vote is a substantial, is substantial to producing a vote that better reflects community as a whole. By staying informed and engaged, we help carry forward John Lewis's legacy of justice and voting equality. When we exercise our right to vote, we honor the struggle that John Lewis and fellow leaders endured to achieve a more inclusive society. John Lewis worked against voter suppression in various ways and his legacy will be upheld for, will be upheld and built upon for generations to come. He has contributed greatly to reshaping modern-day voting and voting rights. From the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act to the countless speeches he gave, John Lewis's work will forever have an impact. Thank you.
Nice job.
All right. I don't think I'd want to be Eric Hansen right now, having to follow that one. No, we're super happy to have you here. PG, no, let's see, no, it's Lisa now. Lisa and Mark. You guys want to do the introductions of your executive with the commission?
Well, here's our CEO for Southwest Transit, Eric Hansen.
Seven commission members, two from Chan, two from Chaska, two from Eden Prairie, one writer, and Eden Prairie has our two right here.
Yeah, and Greg Leeper actually is the other representative.
That's right. We're the city this year that has three, technically, yeah. So thank you, by the way, Councilmember Tumi and Councilmember Freyberg and Greg Leeper for representing Eden. Whoa, that's a big deal. It is, actually. Representing us Eden Prairie residents so well. And PG is a...
Past.
A past.
Former.
Former alumni. I was trying to say, I couldn't come up with the word. And actually, so am I.
Everybody, yes, all of you.
Yeah, when you built the...
So I replaced my three other people.
Yeah, that's, oh, interesting. When buildings get built, they have that little brass plaque thing. And I think I'd just gotten on that commission when that plaque was then being formed or something, so I'm on it as a something. I think I might be secretary, I don't know. Eric, welcome.
Thank you, and yes, that is a difficult act to follow. I had a presentation. Oh, there it is. Okay, cool, thanks. And, you know, actually, I feel pretty inadequate, to be honest with you.
You're good. You're not inadequate.
But I do want to say this because, you know, I am proud. You know, transit is an industry is interesting because, of course, you know, what happened in Montgomery, Alabama, you know, is one of the things I think that spurred the civil rights movement. And I do am pretty proud of an industry and an agency that seeks to serve everybody. It's public transit. And I think we've been doing some great things, particularly in Eden Prairie, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, you know, first. So this is just kind of a year in review a little bit. I promise I won't take a ton of time. Do I have control over here? And, whoops, wrong way. I think everybody knows what we do, but just for the good of the order, we have bus routes. We provide special event service to things like the state fair and sports and concerts and things, and of course, Southwest Prime, which is our on-demand rideshare program. And just a few things that are interesting about us. This is our 40th anniversary this year, actually, and we're going to make a little bit bigger deal out about it as the year goes on, but we were founded in 1986. We are proudly, this is actually at least the second year in a row where we're the fastest-growing transit agency in the state, growing 14% in ridership the last year, 614,000 passengers, roughly. We do a couple of different kinds of surveys. We survey people who are riders on the bus, and generally speaking, anywhere from '96 to '98, depending on the service, we get. And we also do a community survey as well. I'm Morris Leatherman, I think the same folks that do your survey, too. And our image in the community as a whole, and all the communities that we serve, not specifically Eden Prairie, but Eden Prairie, Chan, Hassan, and Chaska, 61% positive and 14% negative in our phone survey that we did last fall, which is really good. Not as good as Eden Prairie as a city, because you're darn near perfect, but 61 is pretty good for a transit agency.
I see you recognizing that, by the way.
It's true. It's true. I wouldn't say anything less. The other piece of information is actually really interesting, too, because we have a mandate, you know, in the original legislation that created us to be as efficient and effective as the Metro Transit, or Met Council, and our bus service to downtown Minneapolis. When you compare us against Metro Transit, it's about 22% more efficient than what is provided by Metro Transit, and our overhead costs are lower than Met Council. And so from our perspective, we think we're doing a pretty good job of meeting that mandate from 40 years ago. This is the survey that I was talking about from Morris Leatherman that kind of shows our positives, you know, creeping up over the last three years. This is our 2019, 2023, and 2025 survey. You can see our positives going from 35 to 53, if you add the strongly positive, 61. We asked people the question, what do you want to use Southwest Transit for? State fairs and festivals, sporting events, concerts, I mean, those are the kinds of things that people really are interested in. And in fact, over the last two years, our ridership for these kinds of events is up 90%, because we've been spending a lot of time focusing on expanding that particular service. Speaking of expanding service, this is actually really cool, because a lot of stuff has been happening in Eden Prairie in the last year specifically. Two services in particular in Southwest Transit. I want to talk about Southwest Prime first. Eden Prairie is by far and away, you know, the largest, you know, source of our ridership. 25,000 rides from the city, 22,000 rides into the city, and we have about 150,000 last year, so you get an idea of how big it is. And within the city itself, another 23,000 plus, another 20,000 plus in just the autonomous vehicle zone for 44,000. So a good third is just Eden people getting around in Eden Prairie in terms of what we do. And this is the really interesting part, because we launched our autonomous vehicle service on April 15 of last year. I think everybody was there, actually, for that, as a matter of fact. And we looked at what was the service that we were providing last year at this time versus the autonomous vehicle service, and the numbers are about 144% growth. Because people ask me all the time, well, how do people like that service? You know, is it something that people want to do? And actually, people like it more than they liked our previous service. Part of that probably has to do with we're still offering it for free, but I do think that a lot of it has to do with the service itself as well. The other cool thing that happened in Eden Prairie is we launched the 686 route. This is the route that goes along 494 to the airport and the Mall of America and parts in between. This is actually kind of interesting, too, because, you know, we used to have Southwest Prime, where you could take a ride directly to the airport. You know, Councilmember Norrie was very fond of that service. And that was a great service, but it was also really expensive at the same time. And so what we found was that we could do this a little bit less expensively in a different way. And if you compare that service versus what we were doing with Southwest Prime, about 60% more people are using that service as well. And in addition to that, we're saving about half a million dollars a year in operating costs by running that service versus what we were doing before. So it's actually kind of a huge benefit. More people use it, and it costs less. That's kind of a win-win. And those are two services that originate and exist, you know, in Eden Prairie, and you should be very proud of that. We've been doing a lot of work to expanding transit in this city. All right, now, those are kind of the platitudes about the things that we're doing, and this is kind of the more serious moment. Last fall, I want to say thank you for passing a resolution of support for Southwest Transit. And, you know, it's going to be an interesting legislative session this coming year. There's a couple of things that we have been talking about and pushing, you know, as an agency. The first one is really about funding equity. So three years ago, there was a 3/4 cent tax, sales tax, that was passed. The suburban transit agencies, which there are four of us, did not get a specific share of that. So whatever we get is whatever Met Council decides that we should get. It's a little different than how we're typically funded, because we're typically funded by a sales tax on vehicles when you purchase a vehicle, and the state defines kind of what the formula is for that. But on the sales tax, that's not true. And so we had a bill that we were promoting at the end of the last legislative session, and we'll be promoting again, to guarantee a certain percentage so that we can continue to get our fair share. So when your citizens pay into a tax, they get benefit back from that. The second thing that's actually really important as well is that there are a handful of legislators, not any of your legislators, but there's a handful of legislators that are like, wow, we don't think we like what we've been doing for the last 40 years. Maybe you should be part of Metro Transit again, and wouldn't that be a good deal? Because then everybody has the same transit service. We don't think that's a good idea for a number of reasons. You know, number one, because I think we're pretty efficient as it is anyway, and we want to keep our tax dollars local. Spend your tax dollars here that we're getting. And at the end of the day, what would happen is what was happening 40 years ago. And that is, is that they would say, well, you know, maybe we should be spending some of that money in the suburbs on the central city. Not to say that they don't need transit in Minneapolis, too, or maybe they even need more transit than we do. But I don't think it's fair to suggest that we could save money in the suburbs and reduce our level of service here so that some other folks can get some. So we launched, actually, last week, a page on our website, which is at SW Transit.org. It's SW Transit.org/activate, by the way, action, about legislative action. And so what we're asking people to do is to go to our website and go to that page, and there'll be a link on there as well that'll allow you to send an email to your legislative delegation to say, yeah, we want Southwest Transit to continue to be your transit provider. We like Southwest Transit, they're doing a good thing. And ultimately, that's kind of an important message that we're pushing here with this legislative session in 2026. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is other Metro Transit, like MVT and so on, doing the same thing?
Yeah, everybody's kind of doing the same thing. So we have a, you know, as you know, an organization called the Suburban Transit Association, and all four of the transit agencies, Minnesota Valley, us in Plymouth and Maple Grove, you know, kind of work together on a lot of these kinds of issues. This information on our website is specific to Southwest Transit. It doesn't go into, you know, what's happening in other agencies, which are all a little bit different, but we do have a separate effort, you know, as a coalition, we're working together, yes.
The good news is our Eden Prairie local news is here, and they could promote that.
They, true. In fact, there was an article, as a matter of fact, in the paper this week, so thank you for that as well. But yes, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions, Mayor?
No, thank you for all you do. It is a really, really wonderful service and an amenity for our town. We'd sure hate to see it go away, so you don't want that.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, council, let's move through a few of these things fairly quickly. We have to approve the agenda. We wanted to add, I wanted to add that one item, that if you wish, any council members during council member reports to share anything relating back to our open podium, we could. We don't have to. And do you want to add one more item, too? And then a second item by Councilmember Norrie. Anything else? Do you want to state what it is, just the topic, just the title, or no?
Just respond to today's open podium.
Well, we're going to do that, all of us.
Oh, okay, okay.
So there's one item. That was my item.
Okay.
Is that okay?
We will get a chance to speak that item.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's fine. That's all I need.
All four of us. All right, great. Anything else to add? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. Any concerns, questions, edits on our city council minutes from January 20 workshop or meeting? If not, can I have a motion?
Vote to approve the following city council minute. City council workshop held Tuesday, January 28, 2026. City council meeting held Tuesday, January 28, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. Moving on to consent calendar, just want to point out, it's exciting, we have four of us in groups of two, because of open meeting law, took a tour of the new police station area, and also extension of some of our normal government activities. It's very impressive. I think our residents will be quite pleased. At any rate, item I is we are voting tonight to purchase and install furniture in that new addition, so that's exciting. Council, any of the items A through, there's quite a few tonight, A through L that you'd like to question or pull for a separate vote? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve items A to L in the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. We do have one public hearing this evening. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do. We have, and you've seen these many times before, vacating drainage and utility easement. This was due to a lot line adjustment. So we have two properties on Island Road, 8,001 and 8,002. Island Road worked out a lot line adjustment, and actually, that lot line adjustment's been filed already, so we don't have any contingencies. Are you laughing because I said 8,001 instead of 8001?
Me?
No, okay.
No, I'm watching Lisa and Tom there, but...
Well, we do expect them to approach the podium at some point in time. No, it's okay.
Sure.
So due to a lot line adjustment, a pretty minor change to the property here, we do need a public hearing to vacate the drainage and utility easement associated with that property.
And before I open it up to the public, just a quick note or question, I guess, comment, you can answer this, Mr. Getcho, but when these lot line adjustments occur and that isolates the old easement, which we're vacating tonight, but we create a new one, I'm assuming, right, yeah, so it's just really sliding the vacation eas- no, sliding the easement from one spot to another to adjust to the new lot line?
Yes, and I think, as I mentioned earlier, that's already been done.
Yep. Okay. No, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on the resolution vacating lots 1 and 2 block 4 Timberlake's Drainage Utility Easements? Not a public hearing, and make the motion if there's somebody that would do that.
I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating drainage and utility easements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right. We're done. You did it. Yay. You can sit through the rest of it if you wish, but you may go. Nice to see you. Do you want to speak for a moment? Okay. By the way, this is the famous, not infamous, this is the famous Tom Anderson as of Anderson Lakes and Anderson Road, and his great-great-grandparents settled here in the 1850s, the Andersons. And so his land was up where St. Andrews was. Your uncles was up where the bank was there by Menards.
Born on that hill.
You were born on the hill, right on the hill?
Yeah.
We'll talk about that later.
Oh, I'm thirsty now.
All right, thanks for coming. So you live right next door to him? You're very lucky.
I'm the neighbor.
Yeah, you're pretty fortunate.
We work together, so this will, well, thank you.
All right, take care.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. All right. Moving on, we have payment of claims. Is there, are there any... Is there, are there any expenses any of the council members wish to question in our pages and pages of our expenses in the last, since we've had our last meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve payment of claims as submitted?
Move to approve the payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norian?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, I think the last is just our council member report time, is that correct? Mr. Getcho, that's the only other outstanding item here?
That's correct, Mayor.
So I just wanted to give this opportunity that we as a council might respond. I did a little right before the meeting started. For anyone listening at home or on this recorded version later on this week, open podium is a time before the council meeting that's not recorded and no minutes are taken. It's an opportunity for residents to come to the council and share concerns about anything that's not on the agenda. It's not a super long time, it's about twenty-five minutes. And so if a whole bunch of people come, then we have to figure out how to make maybe some future time for them to share. But tonight, six people came. They pretty much spoke for the full time. I, I had a couple of minutes at the end. And I wanted to give council an opportunity to say anything back. I'll, I'll just summarize maybe for the people, again, watching from home, that all six people spoke on, on topics relating to the ICE surge that's going on in Minnesota, but particularly as it relates to Eden Prairie. And several of them shared very heart-wrenching, emotional anecdotal stories that they've experienced or they've known people that have experienced. And basically, I think I can generalize, I'm not sure if all six mentioned it, I think so, but asking the council to maybe do something in an ordinance fashion that would limit ICE's ability to be in our parks, to stage their operations from any public piece of property. That's basically their request. We didn't get the chance to respond to that. And I thought I'd just give council a chance if they wish to share something. It's totally up to you, I'm not putting you on the spot if you want to. Anyone want to go first? If no one wants to speak at all, I can, but.
No.
I always go first.
Well, I'll go first. First, I want to thank the six people who came and spoke their mind. Their stories are heartwarming, especially the children's trauma and how they affecting. It's almost remind me of like COVID and beyond that. Kids are terrified in, about the actions that ICE and the propaganda that they're getting. And the kids hearing it and they're reacting to it. And I'm really worried about the impact in the future for those kids, their close friends, that happen to be immigrant, and, and then how they feel later on. I heard a story that one of the mom, her husband taken away, and the mom asking, now what I'm going to do? I don't have a job, I have two kids. It is heartbreaking when you think about the people, not the people that ICE taken away. The people are left behind. And one of the item that we brought up in our strategy meeting is, is anything city can do to help those people left behind. I know, like, I was talking to council member Toomey about the Southwest helping to deliver the food from Prop. And we did that also when I was the Southwest Commission. We did that on the COVID time, same thing. So that's a good, really good thing that Prop doing and with the partnership with Southwest. Like that, what else we can do to help those kids, help those mom that left behind? And then the ordinance thing. What I understand, there is no effective way we can do anything about it. We can create an ordinance, but we cannot enforce it. But if that helps in some form, yeah, I'm for it. Illegal to do it, then I'm okay. But I think also highlight all the thing that our mayor and the city manager and chief did with other fifteen different cities. And I don't know the residents aware of the work they have done. I think that's more effective in terms of lobbying to the federal level, state level legislators to see we can have ICE back off a little bit and, and not terrorize our city. It is, it is, it's really what's happening here is people that are afraid of driving. Many of my Indian friends walk around with a American passport. You know, I, I refuse to do that, some reason in my mind, I'm an American, I'm not going to do it. And I've been here fifty-three something years and never had to do it. And people are doing it being just different color that carrying passport around because being pulled over and harassed. Anyway, I just want to express my thought here and thank again, those people came and spoke. We don't know what are the thing we can do for them, but if anything legally we can do for them, we'll try to do that. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Freiberg or Toomey? Nope. Not at all, or should I, okay, Councilmember Toomey?
I, I just agree with Councilmember Norian that whatever we can do, we will do. And thank you to the people that came and spoke at open podium. It's frustrating, it makes you angry, it's, it's unbelievable, really. And, and I just wish, you know, things were different. But yeah, I totally, thank you, P G, those are good words spoken.
Okay. Couple thoughts here. So we're living, trying to live by the Constitution of the United States, meaning we are. And we feel, many people in America feel that the current ICE surge is illustrating federal agents that are not abiding faithfully by our Constitution. But as we respond to that, we have to be really careful that we do follow the Constitution. And the courts are, are weighing in as they are asked to do. And so you just read a couple of days ago, California passed a no masking ordinance. And a judge ruled that that's illegal. Now whether, what happens in appeal to that, whatever. I was talking to a mayor from Norfolk, Virginia, when I was in Washington a couple of weeks ago. And they just passed a no masking ordinance. They said, and I said, how are you going to enforce that? Because that's the whole thing, you can pass any ordinance you want, but if you can't enforce it, then why'd you pass the ordinance? So he said, we'll send our cops and then we'll, we'll force them with guns drawn. I said, no, you're not. I mean, that's a constitutional crisis right there, and the military would be down in Virginia so fast. And of course, then the judge ruling California, which negated what happened in Virginia. So incredibly complex and complicated. I, I mentioned this earlier before our meeting start tonight, so I'll repeat it now, that number one, most, I'll be careful here because it's, it's not necessarily a wide supermajority, but the polls are showing that the majority of Americans, and I'm assuming the majority of Minnesotans, want the ICE surge to stop. I'm not going to speak for all council members up here, but I'll speak for myself. That's what I want. I want it to stop yesterday. But I want ICE agents to surge out of Minnesota. That, that's number one. And we're not going to get that when we're dealing with a federal government that is more powerful than we are. We're not going to get that by inflaming and escalating, we're just not. Things are moving right now. I mentioned this before the meeting started, things and downstairs tonight too at our workshop in a public meeting. Things are moving, we believe, in the right direction. There's a lot of back channel work going on. And there's things that the city managers are privy to. There's things that I, as mayor, I'm meeting with a coalition group that's now more than twenty suburban mayors. There are things that I'm privy to. So things are moving in the right direction that we're pretty optimistic within, I don't know what a short amount of time is, a week, two weeks? It's not going to be six months, that, that this part of what we're looking for, the ICE surge to end, will occur. My concern as mayor now is what's happened then? Because there's the part two, there's the second shoe to drop. And that is that we've damaged deeply our relationships, I guess you want to say, with our immigrant community. They are terribly fearful there. As was talked about tonight with several speakers, children are hurting and damaging schools. There was a good article in the Star Tribune this morning about the damage to schools. The economy is going to take months, if not years, in Minnesota to recover from this. And possibly because we, I mean, we've, we've not heard a whole lot in the national spectrum about the debate about the value of our ten million undocumented immigrants in America. But that number is not homogeneous. That's not all people that illegally snuck into the United States and committed a crime. In fact, that's a really small percentage. The vast majority of those immigrants have been here ten, twenty, thirty years, working hard, making money, paying social security, never receiving a dime of it, paying sales taxes and never getting anything back. And you take them out suddenly and our economy collapses, literally. I mean, just read it, you know, check my, my, my information on that. So we have to, this is why bipartisan Congress, right before the presidential election, passed, the House passed a bill and the Senate did not, based on the president's influence, an immigration reform bill. We have to have an immigration reform bill that keeps pathways for our ten million illegal undocumented immigrants across the United States. And we have a hundred thousand in Minnesota. And we have very few in Eden Prairie, but we're guessing under a thousand five hundred. We need those people to work roofing, construction jobs, daycare, house cleaning, restaurant jobs. It just goes on and on. And if you pull out twenty thousand immigrants out of Minnesota and there's no one to replace their jobs, I want you to think about that, who's going to backfill those jobs? There, there aren't bodies, there aren't people to do that. So everyone, the Chamber of Commerce, as you know, very well-respected conservative, we might even say Republican group in the state of Minnesota, they are very concerned and, and trying to do back channel talks really quick to get the surge in because it's killing businesses in Minnesota. So that's what I want. I think everyone that came tonight wants that too. I think they would like also the people that came to speak, maybe some a little bit more heavy-handed response. I get it, I'm angry too. I want though not to inflame and escalate because I want to get the surge to end, so. Eden Prairie, I don't think we have any plans to pass any kind of an ordinance like that. By the way, it is legal to pass it, but every single ICE agent legally, according to the Fourth Amendment, tenth, let me get that straight, I'll look later, can walk in any public space in the United States of America, just like any other person living in America. In other words, you can't keep ICE out of our parks. You can keep them from staging in theory, but who's going to enforce that? And I do not want our Eden Prairie police officers driving into those parks with guns drawn against ICE agents with guns drawn. We will have the Alaskan military or the military presence up in Alaska down in Minnesota. We'll have a constitutional crisis. Okay, I'm, I'm digressing, but I, I do not want that. So my, my comments to everyone down at the workshop and then before our meeting tonight is, we're working hard on this. It may not be exactly the pathway that every resident wants. And by the way, some residents don't want us to do anything, right? I mean, we, we understand, we're representing a lot of people here. But I've given you what I believe in my pathway, but we are working hard to get resolution on this. And my mayor grew, I've, I've spent eighty or ninety hours in the last two weeks on this. I'm retired, so I luckily can do that. It's, it's, it's very much a part, I call Mr. Getcho daily, I mean, on this issue. And there's a group of city managers that are talking regularly. And again, we're trying to get the meeting with Tom Homan possibly later on this week. We're, I met with the four congressional offices in D C a week and a half ago. We met with our congresswoman this week. We, she called me last Friday to check. I mean, we're talking all the time trying to problem solve this. So just if we need to communicate that differently and better, I, I will work on that with the people of Eden Prairie. We'll get a communication piece out, I hope, this week. So just know that we're not just sitting back going, whoa, all these things are happening to us. We're really truly engaged in the trenches and we're working on this. Thank you to the six people that came this evening. Deeply do appreciate the stories. We share them. When we get together as mayors, we share what we heard from our residents. Columbia Heights is getting hit hard, really hard, as you've read in the paper. Richfield's getting hit hard. Brooklyn Park had the incident with the police officer. I mean, we're all experiencing it. So I just, I'll end there, I'll let anyone else speak, and Lisa, go ahead.
And, and we're working with our nonprofits in the community to help.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
The people right on the front lines are Prop, Prop Shop, the school district, and we're in regular communication with that. I called Josh Swanson Superintendent seven forty-five the other morning. So we're, we're connecting with the people that are directly addressing the need. We've also offered what we can, some financial assistance to Prop as they're trying to meet that need. As you know, the Laha, the Local Affordable Housing Assistance Act, know that I get that right?
Local Affordable Housing Aid.
Aid Act, Laha, the Laha Funds. We get seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand a year from the Laha Funds. We have that budgeted out to help with various affordable housing initiatives. We can, we can move some of that, so we can help where we can. There's not a lot of government assistance that's in this. That's why we so appreciate Prop and Prop Shop and all the volunteers and all the money that's donated to them because we couldn't, we couldn't do what they do. All right. Rick, anything else? Councilmember Freiberg? Councilmember Norian? Councilmember Toomey?
Well, just wanted to say.
Oh, I knew you.
Thank you for all the.
But you shook your head no first.
Thank you all the work you've done.
Oh, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
You can say, thank you. You can say anything else too, if you want. Councilmember Norian, I appreciate you too. Off, off.
I have one more thing to say.
I know you do.
The last item.
Okay. And by the way, our council member Nelson is not here tonight, but she is keeping up with everything with us. And we're in constant, regular communication with her. What's the last item, just adjourning the meeting? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
Move to adjourn the City Council meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion other than Councilmember Norian? I'm just teasing you. All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Don't we have to vote?
Oh, do we have to vote? All those in favor say aye.